Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. We'll call the last city council meeting of this year to order. At this time, item number one is the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item two, under licenses and permits, 2.1, bed and breakfast license for Bingham Hall.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of bed and breakfast license renewal for the period beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025, for Shannon and Todd McKeith. Bingham Hall Bed and Breakfast, 500 South German Street, subject to compliance with all city requirements.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 2.2 is a gravel pit license for MR paving.
Just one question and I'll approve it. City engineer, we've had no issues or anything this year? No reports or?
Madam President, city councilors, there have been no concerns or anything brought to our attention with the operation in the last year?
I'll motion to approve the renewal of the gravel pit license for MR paving and excavating incorporated for the period beginning January 1, 2025, ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 3.1, summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings.
I can start. The EDA meeting, pretty much business is normal. We did approve Wendy Anderson's contract for another year. We also finished up putting all the solar panels on all the city-owned apartments. Otherwise, I think that was about it. Kind of quiet.
Last meeting?
That's it for your last?
That's it. That's all I got.
He's saving it for later.
Heritage preservation met last night. SHIPA was in town, the state historical preservation office. Again, you're all aware, we're going to host the convention this year, so a lot of time was spent on that discussion. Staff, Al Wood Zabel, John Nysley are working on the grant, which is due soon, and will move forward with it. Lot of work, but it'll be great for New Ulm. Park and Rec meeting, they were given an update on the Herman Monument deconstruction, update on what's happening with that. Also given a preliminary report on our master plan. We're going to do parks this year, our master plan, updated from 1989. And a little further down the agenda, we'll have the donations. That's it.
Thank you, counselor.
I'm going to just add, for the sister city commission, we're still looking for applicants for the Hans Joseph Exchange Program through the end of the month, and currently we have two applicants.
I've got nothing new to report.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
I attended those other meetings, so ditto, ditto. But the partnership meeting we held last week, and a lot of great updates from the different individuals around that table. One of the things for future exploration is land trust, and they'll be coming to the next meeting with more information about that. And the other thing that I'm working on is reviewing the commissions. So my role, what I've taken on, is to meet with the different staff people, respective staff people, as they relate to different commissions. I've had the opportunity to meet with a half a dozen of our staff persons about the commissions that relate to them carrying out their responsibilities, and we'll be continuing that process into the first of the year with some recommendation and an upcoming work session on that.
Thank you very much, and ditto on the EDA, and I don't have anything else to add at this point. Old Business, item 4.1, ordinance number 2024-095, second consideration, amending the EDA officers.
This is where we're basically combining the secretary and the treasurer positions.
Correct.
So I'll offer a motion to conduct the second consideration and adopt the ordinance number 2024-095, amending Chapter 3, Section 3.27, Subdivision 4 of the city code, restructuring the officers of the Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 4.2 is a purchase agreement for the sale of property at 1007 North Minnesota Street. Mr. Nysley.
Good evening, council president, councilors. John Nysley, planner with the city of New Ulm. I'm going to give an abbreviated version of the overview that you all have in your council packets. So for a little background, at the July 16th, 2024 council meeting, the council approved the use of the land acquisition fund, Fund 290, in the amount not to exceed $160,000, to move the existing home from 320 North Broadway all the way down to 1007 North Minnesota Street and install new infrastructure at that location. To date, a majority of that work has been completed, other than the installation of the pad for the air conditioner and the air conditioning unit, concrete steps in the sidewalk repairs. Those costs have been accounted for in the purchase agreement price. We do have a final price that we'd like to enter into a purchase agreement with, with Mr. Shoppecom and Cano. The total amount of all the expenses added up to 1,000, or $158,226, so we're a little bit under budget. The buyers are working with a local bank to secure a mortgage, and the buyers have also reviewed and agreed with all the information provided in the purchase agreement. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nysley.
I commend the amount of work that it went into putting this together and actually making it happen. I'm loving to see that it's, we're getting to the end here. So I'll go ahead and offer a resolution to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign a purchase agreement to sell property legally described as Lot 2, Block 76, north of Centers, to Cassandra A. Canoe and Dylan G. Shoppecom, Street address 1007 North Minnesota Street.
Second.
Thank you. Do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Actually, can you amend the motion? It should be city manager and the finance director.
Authorize the city manager and the finance director to sign the purchase agreement to sell the property.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
I'm just glad to see it's under budget and, you know, we're getting it done and saving it.
And we're repurposing a property while we're making room for some more development, and so that's something that, and we're filling an empty property as well that had been a problem as well. So I just feel like there's a lot of boxes that we checked off with this, and coming in under budget was just even a little bit sweeter. So thank you, everyone, for your work on this. Any other comments? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.3 is the 2025 City of New Ulm Budget and Property Tax Levy. Counselors, this, I have not made any changes since what was, or what we discussed at the public hearing, the last meeting, so that final amount is there. We are at a 5.23% increase over 2024, with very few changes made since that preliminary budget. The biggest one was moving that extra $120,000 into the street department so they can build that building in 2025 instead of waiting till 2026, due to that traffic study being taken out, so.
Come on, Counselor Schultz, you don't want to get the heat for that? Thank you for everybody for working on this, finance director, city manager, staff, getting it down to what we all agreed with. I'll offer the resolution adopting a final 2025 budget of the city of New Ulm totaling $28,021,038, with a property tax levy of $10,468,338, and a city of New Ulm net property tax levy of $10,311,338.
I'll second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Is carried. Under New Business, item number 5.1 is Community Events.
I'll offer motion, offer a resolution designating the following community events for the 2025 year to adhere to provisions of MS 348 dot 410 subdivision 10, which allows cities to have more than one temporary liquor license within a 30-day period. Number one, Bavarian Blast. Number two, Bach Fest. Number three, Brown County Fair. Number four, Foshing. Number five, Herman Fest. Number six, My Fest. And number seven, Oktoberfest.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? My question, My Fest, am I missing something? Is that?
It's for spring.
Spring. Okay. It just doesn't.
I don't know if it's as big a deal as it used to be.
Okay, so we're just kind of just keeping that on there for, for future development, just making sure. Okay, any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5.2 is CVB financials for the quarter ending June 30th, 2024, and September 30th, 2024. Hopefully, we all had a chance to review these.
I'll offer a motion to receive and order filed the report from Sarah Wormka, President and CEO of New Ulm Chamber of Commerce regarding the Convention and Visitor Bureau Financial Report for the Quarter Ending June 30th, 2024, and September 30th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.3 is the 2025 CVB budget.
I'll motion to approve the 2025 budget for the Convention and Visitors Bureau beginning as of January 1, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion does carry. Item 5.4, library entrance replacements and updates. Mr. Zabel, hello.
Hello, Al Wood Zabel, city building official, council president, councilors. This is to repair and replace the back entrances of the main library, the 73 building, their 76 building. They're in disrepair, not being able to be locked and stay locked, and weather stripping is no. So they're in time of repair, and we only received, April only received one bid. She went out and canvassed other businesses, and nobody else submitted any other bids. So this is what we're looking at, is the $13,817 from Fairmont Glass.
Can you feel comfortable about that bid?
Yeah, it's come in with, of course, with other bids of that same, same area. I mean, we're at $11,000 and some change for the replacement of the Hall of Fame front entrance. And that included some savings of the architectural design on the front for the historical value of and stuff. So it's within, looks like it's within budgets.
I'll go ahead then. Authorize New Ulm Public Library to use $13,817 from the city's 290 fund for the entrance and replacement and the updates, and the weather stripping.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 That motion does carry. Item 5.5 is the Career Expo Fee Request. Mr. Shugal.
Thank you. President Becker, city council. Joey Shugal, Park and Recreation Director for the city of New Ulm. This is a request to waive fees for the 2025 Career Expo from the Career Expo Committee. This is a similar request that you have all approved in 2024. The big difference for the 25 request is use of both the south rink and the north rink, dry floor rinks for this, for this. After the 2024 request was approved, this was the first year it was back at the Civic Center. The businesses really were favorable on the change back to the Civic Center, allowed them to do more of, bring in more unique items and really showcase their businesses. If you recall, it was at the high school for a few years in between and then previous to that, back at the Civic Center. There is a letter attached in your, in your packet as well, from the Career Expo Committee explaining the details of the event. We do have that date open for this event in '25 if approved.
And a comment, and a comment, the discussion was, it was a hit last year. I mean, this career people that put it on, put a lot of work into it. It's great for every eighth and 10th grader, all three schools, our whole area community. I mean, it's, it was a plus. It was a hit.
I've been to these quite a few times, and was on the, one of the commissions that helped put this together years ago, and it really is something that is, the eighth graders are kind of fun because they're, they're not really sure what career they want. They're just wandering around, having, eating popcorn and having fun, but, but they still kind of like, oh, what's that over there? What's that over there? And, but then you get the 10th graders that are a little more serious. And my job was wandering around to these kids that could be in groups, and they wouldn't go anywhere because they're nervous. So I'm like, well, what career are you interested? Oh, I wouldn't mind learning more about social work. Come with me. And then I would take them over to where the social worker, I was the drifter, I think it was my nickname or something. It was kind of fun doing that. And so I strongly support this. And this is not, also, how many schools?
I know it's area schools coming in. I don't have the exact number.
We used to bring Springfield in and Sleepy Eye.
Yeah, it's more than just New Ulm.
I'll offer the resolution to approve the Career Expo Committee request to waive the rental fee and all associated fees to hold the Career Expo with New Ulm Civic Center, South and North Arenas on Wednesday, March 26, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I just think it's very important because there, I think a lot of kids don't know what kind of career opportunities lie within our area as well. And we all know that a lot of businesses are struggling to remain fully staffed and attract people, young people especially, into things. So I do, I do appreciate and support you guys doing this, and I know it's a lot of work, but it is a lot of fun for the kids and the businesses. So, thank you. Any additional discussion? All right, Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5.6 is the City Charter Commission convening.
I'll offer a resolution to authorize the City Charter Commission to convene in 2025 to continue the process of reviewing and revising the Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item 5.7 is to petition court to appoint City Charter Commission member.
I'll offer the resolution directing the city attorney to prepare and file a petition requesting the district court to appoint Micah Boyle to the City Charter Commission to serve a four-year term.
I'll second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Boyle. Item 5.8 is revisions to adopt for the City and PUC Personnel Policy Manual. Mrs. Boomgarden.
All right. Thank you, President Becker and Commissioners Shawna Boomgarden, Human Resources Director. So this is our annual updates for the Personnel Policy Manual. First, we just had a couple changes to our E S S T policy due to the legislative changes. There might be some more minor tweaks. Our attorney's still reviewing it. We changed our funeral leave policy to bereavement leave, and then there were some general updates to the pregnancy and parental leave policy and political activity policies. We have the new addition of our administrative, administrative leave for exempt employees, and then our new vacation accrual schedule. So those were pretty much the changes for this year. So, I don't know. Does anybody have any questions?
I have no questions, so I'll offer a motion to approve the revisions of the City/PUC Personnel Policy Manual, which would be effective January 1, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.9, battery building funds transfer. Mr. Shugal, hello again.
Thank you, Council President Becker, city council. This is a request to transfer leftover battery building funds to a trap range restricted fund. And Park and Rec staff has been working with the Sioux Valley Gun Club for a number of years on a potential new trap building. The current facility is a city facility and is in dire need of repair. With the growth of the sport, the Sioux Valley Gun Club does see high use, especially on the youth end, as this sport continues to grow. And there's, with that growth, there's potential funding sources from the state. So the state DNR has a special grant out there. But at this time, what the Sioux Valley Gun Club is, is ready to commit some raise for the match for these dollars. At this point, the city has not contributed to a match. So potentially, what these funds could be used for is financial match to that funding. So those grants go up for $100,000. We would expect, if we're able to apply for that grant, we would come back to the council to ask for authorization to apply for that, to be somewhere in asking for about a $75,000 to $100,000 match from the DNR.
Joey, what's the current age of the building that's there?
I don't have the exact age, Larry, but it, it.
It's old.
It is very well used, and there are areas where it's, it's time to, to do, have an update to continue to open that facility each year.
Is there enough room on that site for that, being we're adding a new, another new building too?
Yeah.
For the street department and?
Great question. So if you all, yeah, so if you go out to the site, where the current structure is, the potential new building would go down to the north even further and kind of sit where the shooting range actually is. There'd be an overhang potentially for a outdoor seating area, because there's a lot of spectators that end up watching. A lot of parents watch the youth activity, and also provides some cover as well. If you think about the Harmon Park Shelter?
Okay.
Kind of like an overhang like that, looking at some potential, just a spec at this moment of what that could look like.
Okay.
And the Sioux Valley Gun Club's been very involved in trying to meet their needs, you know, for the future with this, as they're the operator of that facility.
Thank you. Go on a, go on a gun night. It's wildly popular, as you're saying, and I think this is an appropriate use of, of funds that have been accounted for in the past. So thank you for what you've shared, but I'll go ahead and authorize a transfer of $8,957.49 in leftover funds from the battery building project to the Trap and Skeet Range Restricted Fund as effective December 31, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
President Becker, this is a resolution. It's not listed that way, but it needs to be a resolution.
Thank you so much for that clarification. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item 5.10, 2024 year-end transfers.
Counselors, this is an action I usually take in February, and it will probably come back again in February with some additional transfers. But there was a large amount of transfers in the budget this year and some other things that needed to take place just because of some PSA funds and other activities that has happened. So in trying to get ready for year end, it's a lot easier for us to do the reporting, if we can see what the actual numbers are, instead of going back and adding manually to see what it's going to be. So I'm just asking for these transfers. Most of them were budgeted or make sense due to the activity that took place in those funds. So unless you have any questions about the specific transfers, that's all I have right now.
Nobody's got any questions. I'm going to offer the resolution approving the recommended 2020 for year-end transfers.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.11, orderly annexation agreement for Milford Township. Mr. Snowbrick, hello.
Madam President, members of the city council, the last time the city council dealt with this issue was 20 years ago, so it's not something that you see on your agenda very often. The Milford Township Board approved the orderly annexation agreement that was included in your agenda packet at their meeting last Thursday, December 12. The city of Milford Township previously had entered into an orderly annexation agreement on July 13, 2005, and that agreement expires on December 31, 2024, so that's coming up. As we all know, Milford Township, about the west side of the city of New Ulm, the purpose of the orderly annexation agreement is to plan for the future growth and development of the city, and to identify that area within the orderly. and to identify that area within the orderly annexation agreement. And so if you look at the document in your packet, you'll note the presence of a couple of maps which identify that area. The orderly annexation agreement also establishes a more expedited annexation process for property that is identified on those maps. Orderly annexation agreements are authorized by state statute. The agreement that is in your agenda packet differs from the previous one in a number of ways. And I just want to highlight maybe the major items where we see some changes. The first is that the term of the agreement was reduced from 20 years to 10 years. In looking at orderly annexation agreements from throughout the state of Minnesota, 20 years and 10 years was the common length of the agreements and it was kind of equally divided between those terms. And so this is something that the township asked for and we thought that it was appropriate. They were, they noted that changes tend to take place more quickly and they'd like to be able to react, I guess, to that. The second thing is that the application of the term agricultural development was reduced for properties from 40 acres to 10 acres. And the agreement contains a statement that agricultural development was exempt from the requirement for annexation. And so what this does is it potentially removes some properties from having to comply with this annexation requirement. But given the number of properties of that size within the orderly annexation area, we didn't see that as something that would have a significant impact. And Brown County also, as in their documents, classifies property that exceeds 10 acres in size as being agricultural in use. And so we wanted to be consistent with the Brown County definition as well. The third thing is that the city initially proposed using the same boundary for the agreement area as found in the 2005 document. And that original land area was 1,200 acres. And since the approval of the agreement in 2005, we have annexed approximately 250 acres. And so there would have remained a sufficient amount of property for future city development. In response to the city's proposal, though, we had several property owners come forward who asked that their property be removed from the orderly annexation area. And that was due to their concerns about annexation. And staff would recommend honoring those, those requests. Doing so would reduce the orderly annexation area to 610 acres. And the agreement that you have was written with that acreage amount in place. Again, we think sufficient area, land area will be provided within the annexation area. And there are suitable locations as well. Fourth, the name of the administrative agency, and this is a state agency that's responsible for handling annexations, has changed. And so within the agreement, we had to make a number of changes there. The fifth is that we added an additional sentence that requires any land area being annexed that it directly abut the city. And so this means that if a property being annexed does not abut the city, that the land between the parcel that is proposed for annexation and the existing city limits needs to be annexed as well. And then finally, the city will continue to provide the township with property tax reimbursements for annexed properties. And that goes over a term of five years. Additional information about this, our request is that the approval will identify future growth areas for the city and will expedite the annexation approval process. Also, the city manager and finance director should be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. And the orderly annexation, once fully executed, will be submitted to the state of Minnesota as well. I should also note that we are currently working on the orderly annexation agreement for Cottonwood Township. And we would anticipate that that will be brought before the council for approval sometime in January. That would conclude the staff report.
Looks like a lot of work's going into our future in the Milford area. And I want to thank you for your work on this project and the staff as well. So I'm going to offer the resolution approving an orderly annexation agreement with Milford Township.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just one other question for Mr. Snowbrick. The map you provided us, so it does look like there is one parcel of property we could have that issue with if somebody doesn't want to annex. It's kind of standalone. Is it number four on the map?
That's the service, electrical service station that XL has. So I, I don't know that we'll be dealing with that issue with them until, you know, we annex property that is directly around them.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, did you have a chance to look at this or is there any comments you have on this agreement? This is a big.
Thank you, Council President. I did have a chance to look at it and I worked with Mr. Snowbrick in the negotiation of it. I guess my comments are that the most important things I look for are, are there clear events defined in the agreement that when they occur, it's clear that annexation is the result? And if so, which I think there are in this agreement, is there a clear process for the city to, on its own, complete that annexation? And in this case, there is. There's the city requirement to give notice to the township, but it's simply an act of passing a resolution when one of the triggering events occurs that then leads to submission to the Office of Administrative Hearings and approval of the annexation. So those would be the two things that I'd look at kind of as important, which are present in this agreement. And otherwise, it appears to be a fairly negotiated agreement that reflects the priorities of both parties.
Thank you so much. And this should, in what way streamline our annexation process moving forward? How will it streamline it?
It avoids having to conduct a public hearing on each annexation request. And so that saves you approximately, I would say, 30 days.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for all of your work. Any additional comments or questions?
I do have a question, curiosity. When you talk about reimbursing for property tax up to five years, what is that based on? If there's improvements made to the property, how does that work?
That is based on the property taxes that are currently being paid by the annexed property.
Okay.
And so the first year, we reimburse them 90%, 70%, 50%. So it's a gradual reduction. But you take the property tax that the township currently receives and that is what the amount is based on.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent question, Mayor. Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? I believe we did have a motion and a second. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Wormka.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number 5.12 is regarding the citywide strategic plan. And we do have Ms. Howenstein here. Hello.
Good evening. We're going to try to get the PowerPoint on the screen.
Oh, there you go. It's on that screen, but that's all, so. Okay.
There we go. We need the visuals. Good evening. Moira Howenstein, Senior Planner with Bolton &amp; Mink. Tonight, it's a great honor to be presenting the very first City of New Ulm Strategic Plan. So we have a brief presentation for you. Technology is with us. We partnered with Group Creatives to, to complete this project. Wanted to just give a nod to them. They came from Iowa and did a great job. But a very special thank you goes to the mayor. Thank you for your leadership and your input. The councils, of course, thank you for putting up with us for, with all those work sessions. City Manager Chris Dalton, we could not have done without your guidance. That was most of the times weekly, sometimes monthly. Thank you for, for that insight. And of course, the community and the stakeholders and the champions that we identified as part of our focus groups. Thank you so much. We thought this quote was appropriate to reinforce the fact that ideas without a strategic plan are just wishful thinking. And so we wanted to present a quote from the author of The Little Prince. I will not attempt to pronounce his last name because he is French. So we all know what a strategic plan is, but it's always good to say it together. So the strategic plan is really a roadmap that we've agreed to together with the community and your leadership insights. It really sets the priorities for your decisions for the next five years and establishes a vision and mission. It has five themes. You can see those A through E at the bottom of the screen. Those five themes each have 18 strategies, 23 objectives, and 63 actions. So there's a lot of work ahead of us. Each of the actions has a key performance indicator so that we can remain accountable and we can show progress on how we are doing and we can track that. And then it provides, at least identifies resources to execute those actions and sets a timeline. So the importance of this plan is not just to guide our decisions, but it's also to go after funding of all kinds. Oftentimes, grants require us to have a consensus process by which we have identified actions and priorities, and this is the document. So just want to take a moment to, to read out the vision and mission out loud because we have had many, many versions of this and we've argued over words. So the vision for New Ulm is that New Ulm is a welcoming and adaptable community, growing a resilient economy that fosters innovation and accountability rooted in German heritage. That is really our North Star. We're right, the, the overall vision for the city. The mission is really how we accomplish that. And the mission is to sustain excellence through community-led decision-making that fosters continuous improvements. It really speaks to the work ethic of this community. Each theme has several strategies. We are not going to go through this in detail. It's online for those who want to read through it. But I wanted to show how the plan is structured so that we understand how to use it best. So as part of the inclusion and engagement theme, there's two strategies which you, which you can see at the bottom. The strategy is to enhance civic communication and engagement. The objective is to develop that coordinated plan, to enhance communication between the city and its constituents. And then the actions are the two that you can see on the right. Each of those actions have the key performance indicators, the resources, and also the timeline. So that is how one would read this plan and use it moving forward. Quality infrastructure had the most strategies. That really shows where our energies and focus are at the moment and for the next five years moving forward. Again, we have the strategy, the objective, and then the actions. Economic resilience really focused on not only retention and expansion of existing businesses, but bringing in new businesses and then focusing on that post-secondary education that we just talked about in, in the meeting today. Under governance, we have this focus related to remaining fiscally responsible and accountable to our constituents and optimizing internal SAF systems and city council cooperation and coordination among other agencies. The last theme is really that of sustainability and it has a wide range in its view, not only to establish an action committee, but also talks about a transition to renewable energy, steam to hot water conversion, and then sustainable land use practices, which we've seen tonight as well. We did a lot of public engagement, 12 interviews with community champions, four focus groups, three city council workshops, two staff workshops. Wanted to thank staff very much as well through this process with their honest input. The public survey reached just under 500 participants. We did three pop-ups and we had dozens of postcards. We did the exercise of postcards from the future with a lot of valuable insights and had a public comment on the draft of the plan. And then we did one video, thank you, Mayor, one website, and then radio and social media postings. We reached about 1,744 viewers through our website. And what we heard was interesting. The very first priority, when we look at the community and the collective input as a whole, was economic resilience, followed by quality infrastructure, and then inclusion, engagement, governance, and sustainability. The top priority was really focused on housing options, meaning developing housing for different incomes and needs and then welcoming and attracting residents to New Ulm, promoting New Ulm's German heritage and history, and then expanding transportation to provide those affordable and safe options for the community and those who are commuting within and outside of New Ulm, and then investing in renewable energy. So what we found was that eight out of 10 folks would actually recommend coming to live to New Ulm, which is really, really high when compared to other governments. The MPS score is a net promoter score. And what that means is that anything over 50 is extraordinary. It's just not simply found in government. You are equivalent to an Airbnb, a Netflix, or a Starbucks. So how to use the plan? The plan is really there to guide you to make decisions when you're maybe arguing or having competing interests, having to make difficult decisions. Please use the plan to kind of be your North Star and help you clarify what the true direction is that came about through community consensus. Also, when allocating resources, whether that's staffing, budget, please use this as your, as your guiding and prioritizing document. And it can be updated. The plan is there really to serve you. This, what, oh, sorry. I wanted to show you this little tool that we created for you. It is a digital platform that provides a tracker progress related to each strategy, each action. It is not complete. We are building it as we speak, but it will be available for the city manager to update and show internally and externally to the community how we are doing on progress. So it is available digitally and a new tool that we developed for the city of New Ulm. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I wanted to thank you for sharing and allowing us to join you in this journey. We know that the next five years are simply going to be remarkable.
Thank you very much.
I want to start off by just thanking Bolton &amp; Mink and all you folks for how you made this happen. And you kept us focused and focus groups sometimes are tough because we all have our own agendas or our own issues. And you kept us, you and your staff just really did a nice job in completing this. I was not originally a big fan of having the strategic plan done now. As Chris remembers, I was fine. I wanted the comprehensive plan done and we got that done. And I'm like, maybe we should wait a year before we do this. But I was wrong. I mean, this really is a nice document that really is going to help department heads, staff, counselors on where we're going in the future. So I have a question. I'm not sure who, who should answer this, was Chris or you. How do, how do we make sure we're following through with these things? How often should we be looking at that? Is that something that's going to be? Is that something that's going to be coming back to the city council every six months, every?
So we'll give updates. You know, again, a lot of this stuff we're not going to touch technically until 2026 because our 2025 budget is already done. I mean, there'll be some things that we can work on in 2025 that don't require monetary stuff, laying some groundwork so we can hit the ground running in 2026. Yeah, some of that stuff we can look at. But again, whether it's quarterly updates, you know, twice a year, we can, you know, I can do a report, you know, council, and you potentially will have access to the Monday site where you can go in and just see where stuff is. So again, there's different ways to communicate how that looks. And as we complete stuff, you know, maybe in three years, we can take a look at it and be like, okay, we've completed half the stuff here. We need to start looking at, you know, updating that. So it'll be a living, breathing document as the years go on.
Is that similar to what you do in other cities then, too, or recommend? How often to report out on where we're at?
The document is there to serve you on your timeline. So some things are more urgent and some things have actually started already. Some things are not necessarily under your control. Some things are New Brick's responsibility or some other agency. So it's really there to align with your sense of urgency and for you to update as needed.
Thank you.
You didn't happen to see if Counselor Schultz's postcards for his going away present this evening?
He can finish this?
Maybe.
The fact that we have a strategic plan, or at least I'm hoping that we approve it, you know, some of what Moira shared with us. It provides a roadmap, but it also behooves us to look at that roadmap as we're allocating our funds and so on. And if we depart from that roadmap, to be able to justify why. You know, if we are not following what we thought we wanted in 2024, it's not that it's wrong. It's that we have to be accountable and have those checks and balances. And I truly believe, having worked with strategic plans before, we will start figuring out how often we want those updates and reports. And I'm assuming city manager will be very aware, when he's making his reports on a regular basis to the city, how it is impacted by that strategic plan.
So those folks that are at home watching and maybe want to dig into this and drill it down a little bit more, where are they going to find this?
So it's on our city website under strategic plan right now. And I know that site will be up for just a little bit longer, but we'll actually make a webpage for the.
And I'd encourage folks to take a look at it. There's a lot of good information in it.
Yeah, just piggybacking off of what Les was saying, I commend you guys for how much work it was to put this together. Like you were saying, you were at Bavarian Blast, you were at spiking in the streets. You were actually getting the input from the people that this matters to. And the fact that we do have a strategic plan and a comprehensive plan to go forward is, I mean, that helps us immensely here. I mean, they are two very different entities, but the guidance that you guys have put together for this is immeasurable. So thank you for all what you guys did. So I guess with that, I guess, any other discussion, Andrea?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you as well. This was a long time coming. And, you know, the comprehensive plan is nice, but to have the strategic plan, again, to hear from our citizens and from our councilors and from our city staff, I mean, really kind of getting that holistic view of, you know, what are going to be our focuses over the next couple of years? What is important to people and how do we start laying the groundwork to make that happen? Because we all know government doesn't always work very quickly. But when you have a plan and something that you can reference, you know, especially a website that just is there to remind us, number one, of what our priorities are, and number two, to hold us accountable for what we need to be doing moving forward. And then those five areas that you touched on, you know, you probably have similar responses in every community. But I like that we're able to make that our own because we have a lot of work to do in regards to housing development and just sustainable energy, you know, just different initiatives. And I know that a lot of work went into this, so I appreciate you doing that for us. Thank you.
Go ahead.
With all that said, I'll offer the resolution and approve the citywide strategic plan dated December 2024 for the city of New Ulm, Minnesota.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Again, thank you, staff, and the work you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it'll be a great tool for us for the future.
Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 5.13 is park and recreation donations.
Thank you, President Becker, City Council. A few donations this month. The first one from Don Stifel honoring Alice and Don Stifel in the amount of $2,102 for a German park bench. That'll be located near the garden area. Betty Commles for $90 for the pickleball fund, and New Ulm Public Schools for the final 20% in the amount of $1,600 for the Rec on the Goal free program offered.
Thank you.
Les, you want to make the last motion?
I can make the last motion. I'll offer a resolution to accept the following donations offered to the city of New Ulm through Park and Rec Department for identified purposes, as stated by Mr. Joey.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. We do have an addendum to the meeting this evening, so I am looking for a motion to suspend the rules so that we can take action on item one under our addendum this evening.
Come over.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion does carry. On our addendum this evening is item number 1.1, which is revised development agreement for Beeky LLC, the former Target property. Hopefully, everyone's had the chance to read through this. And Mr. Schnoburg?
Yeah, Madam President, members of the city council, I'd like to begin with just a little bit of history. The Planning Commission at its January 26, 2023, meeting unanimously recommended approval with 12 conditions, the request of Eric Bodie on behalf of the Dayton Hudson Corporation to allow warehousing in a B3 zoning district. And that was on the subject property at 1914 South Broadway. One of the 12 conditions required the amendment or replacement of the existing development agreement for this property by a new superseding agreement to reflect proposed changes from the new use of the property. The city council at its February 7 meeting, 2023, approved the Planning Commission's recommendations with the 12 conditions. The title of the revised agreement is Broadway First Edition Restatement and Amendment of Reciprocal Easements and Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants. The property in question consists of two lots, has 7.52 acres. The existing development agreement with the Dayton Hudson Corporation was dated October 20, 1998. The private development and the public improvements that were contemplated in the existing development agreement have been completed. However, certain covenants contained in the development agreement have prospective application and continue in force as legal obligations of future owners of the subject property. So the purpose of the revised agreement is to primarily focus on two areas. One is the property's future use and terms and conditions that would apply to the development of the property. I'd like to real quickly give you an example of that. The current agreement requires 450 parking spaces on the Target parking lot. So now, in the new agreement, we changed that to read that the use has to comply with the city's current parking requirements in our zoning ordinance. And so throughout the document, you will find those kind of statements that we needed to correct. The second reason for the agreement was to amend the bike and pedestrian easement to address alignment changes that have been required by the city. And this was also one of the 12 conditions. I should note that City Engineer Stotheim has also done a lot of work on this particular document, as has John Nysley. So conditions for the approval of this should be that the city manager and finance director should be authorized to sign the revised agreement on behalf of the city. The staff and city attorney should be authorized to further refine as needed final language and exhibits associated with the revised agreement. I don't think that's going to be necessary. And then finally, entry into the revised agreement will facilitate orderly development of the property and establish a new alignment for the bike and pedestrian trail on the property. I would note that the city attorney has assisted in the preparation of the agreement. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Schnoburg.
I looked this overnight. Didn't have any concerns. So I'm going to offer the resolution approving revised development agreement with BEE KI LLC for the property legally described as Broadway First Edition and located at 1914 South Broadway.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. While we do not have any additional official business today, I would like to take a moment to thank my colleague Counselor Schultz for his 16 years of leadership here on the council. We do have a couple of things for you, so I don't know what order we're going to go, but at this time, I am going to pass the gavel your way so that you can adjourn the meeting.
I did a little math this afternoon, and I've attended about 370 city council meetings. I have worked with 13 elected officials, past and current, sitting at this table, worked with many department heads that have rolled over a couple of different times, in some cases. And it's been a great ride. It's been fun. It's been interesting. I loved working with constituents in my ward, as well as working with the people from the city to move us all forward in an appropriate. We always cut along, even though we might not, we might have disagreed on some motions, but we voted and we moved on and never held a grudge, and I really appreciate that. And this is such a good group, and with Tom coming on board, I think they're just going to continue to move and go well in our future. So thanks to all of you. And that will end our meeting today. Can I do that?
Oh.
Almost, darn it. Some questions. I don't know.
No more questions?
No more questions!
It has been a real pleasure for me, just in the two years, to get to know you as a city councilor. I've known you before socially. And on behalf of the city of New Ulm, though, I want to thank you for your dedication. And I have.
My questions?
And your, oh, yes, I did say that to you at the EDA. Your questions were greatly appreciated. But it did, in all seriousness, your questions helped clarify for our constituents what it means, whatever we were discussing. You helped clarify that for the audiences. And that, I know I'm getting feedback from individuals asking me, who's going to ask the questions if Les isn't on the city council? So Tom?
Tom?
This may be something you want to talk to Les about. But in all seriousness, your dedication and commitment is very evident. And New Ulm is better for it. Sophie Hathaway, the city of New Ulm, I'm presenting you with this plaque of appreciation for your service for 16 years. And you mentioned the number of city council meetings, but we all know that as a city council person, you sit on how many commissions? And that they have meetings monthly, quarterly, or as needed.
I didn't quite figure that out, but that number got pretty high.
Ponder that and bring it back to us sometime. Come as a guest, okay?
There you go.
Okay, again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you?
To adjourn. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Yay. Good job, Les.
Good job, Les.